Okay, welcome to the Worcester School Committee. And we are going to stop by people who can stand for the pledge allegiance. Then we're going to sing the National Anthem by Andrew O'Gray. Andrew did a great job at the Democratic Convention on Saturday at the D C U Center. And by the way, Andrew's birthday yesterday. So you make sure your grandfather takes you anywhere you want tonight. Okay? Nice job, Andrew O'Gray. Happy birthday. Okay. So we have the... Who are we missing here? Okay, so we have the consent agenda. A through E, I to five. Okay. Roll call.
Member Alvarez. Here. Member Biancheria.
Here.
Oh.
No, no.
Oh, I forgot to do the roll call. So keep going with the roll call, but go ahead.
Member Alvarez.
Here.
Here. Member Biancheria.
Here.
Member Benanda.
Here.
Member Guardiola.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member Roy.
Here.
Mayor Petty.
Here.
Now we have the consent agenda. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancheria.
Yes.
Member Benanda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. F, we have item for reconsideration to create a reasonable future-ready district cellphone policy. Begin to consider adding ear pod usage to the policy handbook and utilize the administrative educator and student feedback during development of the policy. So motion is for reconsideration. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancheria.
No.
Member Benanda.
No.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman. Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
No.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. So the motion is to approve both items? Roll, let's go. Member Benanda.
I'm through the chair. Can we have discussion about that?
Yep.
Oh, perfect. Since those, that item came up, there has been a lot of emails we've all received asking us again to reconsider the cellphone policy and not allowing cellphones in schools. And also the same thing with the earbuds. A lot of people have sent us recent information about that. That's research. Several parents and staff have shared how it's very disruptive. And one parent, we received a notice today, all of us did this afternoon, spoke that they actually moved their child from the Worcester Public Schools because of too much cellphone use in the classroom and felt that they were not learning because of that. So I really think that we should think about passing this policy. Most other superintendents are discussing either purchasing, I forget what they're called, but they're little locks, or in some way restricting the use. And here we are in Worcester having the policy be that they can use cellphones and they can also wear the earbuds. So I think we should really think seriously about agreeing on this new policy. Thank you.
Member McCullough.
Thank you. Through the chair to administration. I just want to clarify a few points that were brought up at subcommittee about this policy. So to administration, it is correct that phones are to be away and on silent unless expressly allowed by the teacher for educational purposes. Is that correct?
That is accurate. Oh, through the chair, I apologize. That is accurate.
Absolutely. And then as far as its wired and wireless headphones or earbuds, it's also the case that they're not allowed to be used unless they're being used per the permission of the teacher, unless we're talking about at lunch or in between class. But in class, phones and earbuds are to be away and on silent unless specifically allowed by the educator. Is that correct?
I'm superintendent.
Through the chair, that is correct.
And we also have, through the chair, we also have outlined potential consequences in the policy that I know personally as a school member myself, this was something that I brought up that my expectation is that we're supporting our educators and our building administrators, that if students are breaking those rules, that the consequences are adhered to so that it does not become a distraction if it's something that's not being done for educational purpose with the consent of the educator. Is that correct, that administration would fully support consequences being doled out if policies are being broken?
Through the chair, yes. We would follow the progressive discipline. So first it would be the warning and then the necessary steps. If you've got a repeated student, then you would take those necessary steps. This policy gives more structure than what the current policy provides.
Thank you.
Okay. Member Johnson.
Yes, thank you. To the chair, I just want to add, when you look at this, it says, "To promote reasonable cellphone use and maintain an engaging learning environment. Noneducational uses. Classroom teachers should not authorize the use of cellphones for noneducational purposes. No social media, video games during class time. Out of sight, silent during instructional time. Cellphones must be powered off or left on silent or airplane mode and stowed away and out of sight in a clothing pocket, purse, or backpack during class to minimize disruptions. Then it's respect for others. When authorized, students are expected to use cellphones in a manner that respects the overall learning environment and does not disrupt fellow students or staff. Taking photographs or recording audio or video without permission is strictly prohibited. Digital citizenship, teachers, administrators, and school staff will promote a digital censorship by teaching students responsible and ethical use of technology, including cellphones, in educational and professional contexts." What I will also add to this, Mr. Mayor, is that, you know, we're just living in a world of technology. And again, I would also caution people in regards to in educational settings in schools and things like that, is this is the way we live. I mean, I think there's also teachers that are using cellphones and have technology in schools. I could tell you that probably, actually, the only one that has a student in the Worcester Public School now, or two students in the Worcester Public Schools, I could tell you that it's been very valuable for my daughter at times to have it, to where she asked permission to step out, to either text me or call me when there was something going on that I needed to respond to with her after school in regards to not feeling well or changing an appointment or something. That's something that came up. So that is also something that parents also talked about, the ability for, to be able to communicate with their kids while they're at school or whatever. We don't have the ability anymore for students to go down and use the phone down in the office, to call their parents, to bring a change of clothes, to do this and that. This is the world that we're living in now. I mean, this is just how it is. I think this is an appropriate cellphone policy that was different from before. The rule is no cellphones in class should be on silent, in your bag, stored away unless authorized by the teacher for educational purposes. I think it's clear. I think all the principals know it. They agree with it. The teachers have it. That's the rule. That's the policy. And we're looking for people to enforce that policy. Thank you.
Uh, Member Roy.
Thank you. I'm very much against having the cellphones in school. I was privy to going to one of our Worcester Schools the other day where they had the pouches and the school, the phone is put in the pouch, one of our, one of our schools. And I asked the teachers what they thought and they loved it. They said, "This is great. We get the kids full attention." I asked some students how they liked it. They said, "Well, we really don't, but we do understand it and we are getting, we are paying more attention." You can still get to the phone with permission to have it unlocked, but it's locked. As Member Benanda said, we received a few emails from parents who are very much against the cellphone usage. I'm just not a fan. I think school, their kids need to be focused. I also worry about bullying, as I've stated before, with the phones. I would just like to see us revisit conversation on this.
Okay. Thank you. No, sir. You want to speak? Member Benanda.
I think the, one of the things that teachers feel strongly about is violation. What happens when it's violation? So let me just read you the violation. It's a very light policy with the word "may." A, violations of this policy may result in disciplinary action. Warning, students may, first time, they receive a warning. They already know the rule is you can't have it. Okay, so we're going to give them a warning. Students may receive a warning and be reminded of the policy for minor violations. Confiscation, continued violations may result in temporary confiscation of the cellphone, which is returned to the student or the parent guardian at the end of the day. Third, parent guardian meeting for persistent violations, because there are persistent violations every single day. A meeting with the parent guardian may be scheduled to discuss the issue and find a resolution. There's no teeth in that. And that's what teachers are saying. That's what some administrators are saying. There are no teeth in what happens if you violate. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Mailman.
I am sure most of us, we got calls on both sides or emails on both sides of this issue. And, you know, 10 altogether, I don't even think it was that much. But, but the number is kind of, this is a hot issue to be acknowledged. And one parent said to me, you know, "It seems clear that this is where the committee wants to go." I think there was a lot of thought put in on the subcommittee level and a lot of discussion put in on the subcommittee level and by administration. So I intend to support that decision. And things like this might be things that come up again some other day. But, but I think we're meeting the moment and I respect the work of my colleagues and the administration to give us a policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just want to thank the chair and the committee and the administration for providing this. And we'll take both of these items collectively and the roll call.
Member Alvarez. Yes. Member Biancheria.
No.
Member Benanda.
No.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
No.
Mayor Petty.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next, we have this one item from executive session. Must be quick. Pursuant to action taken in executive session is moving to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and the Team's Issues Union Local 170 for, on behalf of the Worcester Public Schools transportation mechanics, establishing a pay raise for bargaining unit members retroactive to July 1st, 2023. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancheria.
Yes.
Member Benanda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. Okay. So we are going to recognitions. First recognition of the Forest Grove Middle School Girls Basketball Team for winning the Citywide Basketball League Championship in an undefeated season. So we have Forest Grove Middle. Come on in.
Thank you. You know, something that I've obviously advocated for during my time on the committee along with others is middle school sports and the importance of having them in our middle schools. And tonight, I'm very happy to be able to recognize the Forest Grove Middle School Girls Basketball Team for winning the Citywide Basketball League Championship and for an undefeated season and, you know, thank their coaches for their time and efforts. But also, it's exciting to see this as we then later, or just shortly, will be recognizing the South High Girls Basketball Team. And these are our future players at our different high schools. So I hope to see you guys continue to play and be out there on the court and continue to have success in basketball. Thank you.
Okay. Is the coach here? How you doing? Very good. Congratulations. Must be pretty happy. And so... Thank Ms. McCullough for bringing you in. So we have certificates of recognition. Worcester Public Schools, Worcester, Massachusetts. Recognition of the basketball player for winning the Citywide Basketball League Championship in an undefeated season. Signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. And so first up is Analiae Brown. Where's she down? With them. Okay. Here, come on here. Okay. No, this is fine. Isabel Cruz. Not here. Okay. Other side. Uh, is it Kamani Franklin? Kamani Franklin? Is it Azariah? What's that? She's not here. Azariah's not here? Okay. Doucher Wanda Gray? Not here? Okay. Uh, Steffi, oh, Steffi, I'm sorry. Look like gals. Steffi Cryassis? Cryassis. Oh, is there some relation here? Kina Sa, say, can you say?
Molly.
Canasia. Canasia Molly. Alyssa Miriam. Congratulations. And all we thank, Mohammed. Is it Anousha? No, I got that one. What is it? Anousha, okay. Anousha, is that you? Oh. And it's, your last name is Mohammed? Okay. Anousha Mohammed. Okay. Mackenzie O'Brien. Is it Janelleus? Janelleus Pizarro. Eliana Penner. Is it Rocha? Not here. Jessie Rushton. Latesse, right. Not here. Okay. Alexiana Sanchez. Avery Smith. Oh, yeah. Veronica Torres. Coach Shannon Howren. Congratulations, Coach. Coach Kara Walsh. Not here yet. Okay. Coach Tala, is it Tala? What is it? Oh, I actually read off this list here. Coach Talawa. Apremian. Coach Apremian. Congratulations. You get the extra? Okay. Coach, you want to take the other certificates? And maybe go around? Oh, you want to get it? Okay. Would you guys all squeeze in and try to get a picture? Just want to come up to you. You might have to squeeze in a little bit better. If you want to come up closer.
Yeah, isn't that a movie? What is that movie? Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, do we have South Highway Colonel's here? Are the coaches here too? Wasn't that? Yeah. Okay, I'll give it a shot. Okay. Ladies, congra... Oh. Member McCullough.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, I'm happy that the girls that are here tonight were able to come and be honored and recognized because they truly had an incredible season. And I was fortunate, as well as I know many of the other members were, to be able to attend some of their games and really see such a successful run. And it was right there, within your grasp. And you have everything to be proud of with your finish with the championship game in the finals. So I'm just very proud of all of you and congratulations on a successful season.
Great job. I got to see a few of your games. They were excellent, very exciting. So very proud of yourselves. So Worcester School Committee Certificate of Recognition presented to each player for an incredible season as Division Two runner-ups in historic appearance in Division Two State Championship Games. Signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. And the first up is... Is it Brian Bescones? Brian Bescones? Congratulations. Is it Naomi? Naomi? Okay. Blue? Lali Blanc? Not here? Okay. Is it Lydia Charon? Is it Jayla? Jayla Cologne? Gianna Esteviz? Viana Esteviz. The sisters? Is it Nivea? Not here? Oh, okay. Samantha Combs? Not here? Is it Emma Holian? Not here? Okay. Nicole? No, not here. Nicole's not here? Okay. Madison Leighton? There you go, Madison. Let's see what we got here. Eva McCollan? Ines T. Robles? Not here? Okay. Gabriela? Wasovich? Okay, Gabriela Wasovich. Oh, we have our coaches too. Mary Nugent, Sam O'Gara, and Diego McLean. So... So I just want to congratulate each one of you and maybe you can... Oh, we're going to get a picture. That's right. I forgot. Okay. Next up is recognized North High School Boys Basketball Team in the 2024 State Basketball Championship win. To congratulate them for their back-to-back wins, an undefeated season, and 45-game win streak. Come on down. Okay. Turn this over to Member McCullough. Ask Al Petway to come up here for a minute. So...
So I'll first off state that I did not intend for all of these recognitions to come in on the same night. It's the way it happened for the end of the year. So I appreciate the indulgence, but these teams are all so worthy of being recognized. And, you know, with the North High Boys Basketball Team, what a run it has been. Incredible to be able to attend and see you win two state championships back-to-back, undefeated, 45-game win streak, just absolutely incredible. And I know that we have celebrated you a great deal, but you've earned those honors and just so proud of all of you. And I know many of you are going on to college next year or prep school and beyond. And of course, Coach Petway has made his big announcement that he'll be moving over to Worcester State University. And just can't thank him, his staff, and all of you as players because you not only represented us well as athletes, but you were always so respectful and just absolutely well-regarded everywhere you went. And you've done so much in the community as well. And just want to thank all of you for all of those efforts and your coaches for making sure that that's the type of team that you were.
Okay, we have a certificate of recognition presented to each of the players for placing first two years in a row at the M I A A Division One Boys Basketball State Championship with the North High Polar Bears. So signed by myself, the superintendent of the Worcester School Committee. And we will hand these certificates out. So I want to say congratulations again to your team and well-coached and the great principal himself. And we will hand these certificates out and so I want to say congratulations again to your team and well-coached and the great principal himself. Tyrese Asensah. Kari Bryan. Lenaje Christopher. Devin Hill. Amir Jenkins. Keishon Joyner. Jaden Sekody. Amar Minor. Joseph Okla. Amari Scott. Tayshawn Steele. Head Coach Al Petway. Assistant Coach Pat Weatherby. Assistant Coach Eric Boss. Assistant Coach Damar Langford. Assistant Coach Jared Wilborn, he's not here. Assistant Coach Sharad, he's not here. Manager Anna Lita, not here. And Media Manager Ambitious Angelo. Okay, we'll get a picture. You guys want to squeeze in and up here or around? Okay. Okay, we all set then, we are on public comment? Anybody want to speak from the public, you get two minutes, two minutes and the item that you're speaking about?
Yes, of course, thank you Fred Nathan. Three dash two-one-two. I am very, very disappointed that the city schools have a cellphone policy that has no bite to it. As it was already explained by a member Benanda. And I can only say that the parents are disappointed and we'll see if that changes. Four dash seven. I am very happy to support Counselor King's item, the Manny Familia Court. It is a win-win-win for a man that died trying to save a child. I cannot say any more than has already been said. And I want this item to pass one hundred percent. Nobody to abstain from voting or to walk out on the vote. Because there are people who might, but I want this one hundred percent to vote. And if it, and if anyone votes against it, I want them to be voted out when the votes come around to vote for City Council and School Committee again.
Thank you. Anybody else? Names to your, see your residence and item number?
I don't have an agenda, so I can't give you an item number.
Oh, you'll speak to the item, that's fine.
Okay, my name is Heather Stedek, I live in Worcester. I'd like to take this opportunity to bring to the committee's attention the possible conflicts of interest in regards to the budget conversation. It is my understanding that all committee members and volunteers are required to take an annual conflict of interest refresher and I think that it's important that the public see their officials take these concerns seriously because not to invite some ethics investigation. The fact that we engage in a deliberative public budget process means that any information relevant to that process needs to take place on the floor in a public forum. There is a long history of the school committee honoring this policy, including when Jack Foley recused himself, when the committee deliberated anything about the YMCA, or when Tim Murray accused himself in discussions related to anything that had to do with his wife's position within the district. As a more current example, in the City Council, Counselor Ojeda stepped out during a City Council meeting after identifying a conflict of interest. We need to see that some, that same commitment from this body to maintain the public trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Does your name, see your residence? And item number or item?
Hi, my name is Frances Anthes and I live here in Worcester. I'm going to make this very brief because I'm basically agreeing with the person who came before me. First of all though, I want to thank you all, I think that this budget has been really difficult. I very much regret the commitments that the state failed to make in terms of thinking about the education of our students. And I think that the process that you all put forward was very open, was very deliberative and I really appreciate that. I appreciate that students were involved, I appreciate the parents were involved, I appreciate the community was involved. I was really touched by hearing that when the superintendent went to our student advisory committee, they said, "Don't cut out preschool." And to me, that's exactly what we should be thinking about when we talk about a budget for educating our children that we're thinking not just of ourselves, but that we're thinking of others and that was just incredibly impressive to me. But I'm here also to address what I consider the conflict of interest issues that have come up. This is something that is coming up in our society on all levels and I don't think we have a very good understanding of it. But my understanding is that it is our responsibility as citizens to note for the public that we have a potential conflict of interest and to recuse ourselves from those kinds of deliberations. I think that we've seen in other levels of society us placing this responsibility on people who may not necessarily rise to that responsibility. And I'm concerned that that might reflect very badly on our city as well as other parts of the community, as well as other parts in the country. So I would actually ask you to ask the Law Department for a ruling on this, what does conflict of interest mean? I would really be upset if this long and deliberative process was somehow rather derailed in the future because we didn't have a good reading of what the conflict of interest required. So I thank you very much for your time, I appreciate that this has not been an easy process and I thank you for giving all that you have to it.
Thank you. Does your name, see your... See your residence?
Good evening, I'm Viviana Brevenandez and I would like to speak about the budget. I want to commend the Worcester Public Schools Administration for a comprehensive, clear, thoughtful budget that follows best practices in education all across the nation. And I am a little disappointed and I want to state that, that we're talking about a five-hundred-and-forty-four million dollars budget. And we have spent two hours talking about the cost of Chromebooks, classrooms and hoops inside or outside schools to cut point zero-nine of the budget in administration, less than one percent. And I just don't understand this. I really don't. Just to reduce the budget in administration for the superintendent to be able to do her work and be able to implement this budget appropriately, I think that this is something that should be reconsidered. And the fact that the problem is point zero-nine percent of the budget tells us that this is an amazing, perfectly delivered budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Viviana. Okay, see nobody, what's that? We have two people on line.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Is this Joe?
This is Joe.
Okay, does your name, see your residence?
Joseph Corzini, two-eighty-five Salisbury Street, Worcester, Massachusetts. And I am here tonight to just talk on behalf of the petition by Counselor King. First, let me just say thank you all for your time, I've tried to keep my comments short. But I'm here to talk in support of the petition. In the past three years since the passing of, the tragic passing of Manny Familia, it's been, it still feels surreal. And as a kid, I can, I can remember meeting Manny where I met so many other young brothers on the basketball courts here in the city of Worcester. It didn't matter the place, whether Crumpton Park, East Park, even in Rocketland. Sometimes on the occasional college court, we would be kindly asked to leave. It was in those spaces that we developed friendships and competitive spirits. It was in those places that we learned a lot of lessons too, hustle, teamwork, good trash talking, you fear competition. The culture of the court itself, in its own words, had its own world of rules and traditions that we quickly learned. Manny was fast and he was a quick, in terms of his pull-ups. He played defense, which I appreciated, and he was fairly diplomatic when he was, when there was a fifty-fifty call. He went to Doerty and in those days, Doerty beat up on us quite a bit. But I really lived for those nights on the corner of the lights where a group of us North High Boys took it to a group of Doerty Boys. Life moves fast since high school and I would never have predicted just where life would take us. But at his wake, seeing a lot of those young brothers who had come up with, sitting there in pain, it was struck and I reflected back on those times with a lot of appreciation. Manny will forever be remembered as a hero who laid down his life willingly and as an exemplary officer. I also want people to know that he was a great competitor on the court. He was a brother to so many of us in the city, one of whom we were completely proud of in terms of where he took his life and he was the son of the city. He loved the game of basketball. Three years ago, I asked Counselor King if he'd be willing to check in on the opportunity for naming Doerty's court after Manny in honor of him. And tonight I ask that you support the petition to support that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Martha Cole. Martha? Here, here you go. Does your name, see your residence?
My name is Martha Cole and I am a Worcester resident. I thank you for this opportunity to make a public comment on the recently approved cellphone policy. My aim tonight is not to contest the decision, but to urge continuous review and revision of this policy for the betterment of our students' educational experience. I want to preface my comments by clearly stating that I am not opposed to the use of technology for educational purposes. However, smartphones and their associated apps are unnecessary for our students to be future-ready. In fact, our students will be more prepared for the future if they are fully engaged academically and socially during school hours without the distraction of personal smart devices. Having visited every school in our district and spoken with many teachers, it is evident that a policy requiring teachers to police smartphones is unsustainable. The mere presence of these devices in the classroom undermines our district's vision of a learner. Peer-reviewed research supports this assertion. I have already shared with you much reliable research on this topic. To cite a few points, smartphones are primarily used for texting, social media and filming, not for educational purposes during school hours. These devices are designed to be addictive and even the best teachers cannot compete with multi-billion dollar companies that vie for our students' attention. Any technology needed for educational purposes is available through school-issued devices such as Chromebooks. The mere presence of smartphones within students' reach affects their academic performance, knowing that they can turn to their phones during downtime, in between classes, at lunch or during long bathroom visits distracts them from face-to-face social interactions and academic pursuits. Alarming reports indicate that forty-one percent of surveyed students have encountered pornography during the school day on these devices. In May of twenty-twenty-three, the U.S. Surgeon General issued an advisory regarding social media and youth mental health and he said at this time of national youth mental health crisis, swift and decisive action is necessary to safeguard our children. These devices do not align with our mission and do not prioritize the mental health or education of our young people. Why then would we allow them in our classrooms where they undermine our ability to achieve our educational goals? I understand the challenges and responsibilities you face as school board members and I appreciate your dedication to the well-being of our children. We elected you to implement and enforce policies that advance our educational vision. In closing, I ask for the following specific actions. One, a policy revision to create a policy that requires all personal smart devices to be put away for the day in some kind of locker. There are numerous successful examples of such policies in our state, in our country and globally. And if you decide not to adopt this request, please provide a written public statement explaining your reasoning, including specific studies that support your position and detailing how allowing personal smart devices enhances the district's ability to achieve its educational mission. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else, but the Familia family, I see Elvin's on the phone, maybe after Christian speaks he'll come on? No? No? You're not speaking? Oh, you guys, okay, so we're going to go, we're going to close this part of the meeting and... What's that? Yeah. Oh, you want to speak on something else?
No, on this, on...
Okay, you want me to read the petition?
On the basketball court.
You're speaking for Christian?
No, I'm not speaking for Christian.
Okay, go ahead, you got, name and city residence?
Caribor Powers, Worcester. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I wasn't aware that this item was on the agenda and I just wanted to speak in support of it also. My colleague Joe Corzini said a lot that I agree with. But I just wanted to add, I coached with Manny at St. Peter's for almost a decade and my daughter will likely go to Doerty, walk there from our house and I am here in my Celtic screen because I played basketball in the Worcester Public Schools my whole career and everything that he said about the kind of community that it builds for our young people, the importance of team sports and the way that it brings people together, the, when Manny passed away, there are people across every different part of our community that you wouldn't expect to come together, that came together. It's really shameful that that ended up being a political moment because it wasn't. Because it was about the commitment that he had, that he showed, not just when he put that uniform on, but when he was in his sweats on Saturdays coaching seven-year-olds. And that's the kind of community that I know we have here in Worcester and I urge everyone to vote to support this naming because I think it's a really beautiful way to honor that commitment and invite us all to show up in that spirit. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that will be the last speaker, then we'll go to the item. Petition by Christian King to consider the action of dedication with the name of the new basketball court at Doerty High School in honor of Manuel Manny Familia, who personified team first in life and in deeds. Manny Familia Court are such a name approved by the Familia family, school administration, school committee members, which serve nose to all students at Doerty High School and at the Worcester Public Schools that life lessons learned in youth sports indeed carries over into one's personal and professional life. Emmanuel Manny Familia made this ultimate sacrifice in life by giving himself up for others. Consequently, he is a Worcester's forever teammate. Manny loved the game of basketball, was very much a part of the Worcester basketball community. As such, this would be a befitting act. And motion is going to refer to FOG. However, Counselor King, do you, anybody want to speak on it? We're good? Yeah, if I can get him, can you elevate Elvin Familia to the, hang on, Elvin. Okay, Elvin, just have to unmute yourself and I think you're all set. And I think if you're on the phone, was it Style? There he is, okay.
Hello?
Hey, Elvin. Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, give your name and your comments.
Yes, this is, this was brought to us first. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us, for having me on tonight. But when this idea came out, was brought to us, it was, it was kinda like a, one of those feelings that you can't explain just because of the type of tribute that this would be to, to my brother and the sacrifice that he made. And, you know, Manny was big, big on basketball. He grew up playing basketball in Worcester, especially at Doherty. And one of the things that he found through basketball was a way to give back to the community. Not only, not only the knowledge that he had for the game, but also for teaching kids how to be part of the community, how to be a good member of Worcester, which is, was so big for us. It was, our parents growing up brought us on helping all this, making sure that our neighbors were okay. And, and that was one of the best ways that Manny could give back. Having his name on this new high school, it will be, it'll be a great honor and a great tribute to Manny and the sacrifice that he made. And I cannot thank you guys enough for even thinking about this idea. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Elvin. And so we're gonna send that to Finance and Operations and Government. Anybody else have any comments? But congratulations, Counselor King, for putting that on. Much appreciated. Thank you, Elvin, for your comments. And we'll send that for a hearing and work it through the school administration. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we're going down to Standing Committees to consider the approval of the minutes for the Standing Committee on Finance, Operations, and Governance, meeting held on May 20, 2024. Member McCullough?
Thank you. This meeting was held simply to go over the student handbook and make proposed changes for the upcoming year. In attendance were myself, Member Biancaria, and Vice, sorry, Vice Chair Johnson, and, not Vice Chair Johnson, myself, Vice Chair Biancaria, Member Johnson, and Member Roy, as well as Dr. Morris, Dr. Gagnes. And we went over the proposed current changes, suggestions were made, different edits were adopted. Member Johnson asked how the handbook acceptance forms are tracked, to which Dr. Gagnes replied that acknowledgement forms are returned by parents and tracked at the school level. Member Roy asked for tracking information to be shared with the school committee. I made the motion to accept the additional changes that discussed with the motion that was made, and to hold this item until the next meeting, when we will review these policies that were previously held, the cellphone policy and standardized testing, as well as any other portions of the handbook that are held for review. And on a roll call, vote of four to zero, the motion passed and the meeting adjourned.
All sense of motions to approve, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Consider the approval of the minutes of the Standing Committee on Teaching, Learning, and Student Success, meeting held on May 22, 2024. That would be, Member Guardiola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This meeting was held on May 22, 2024. Present at that meeting was myself, Vice Chair Alvarez, Member Benanda, and Member Mailman, as well as the administration. We took up three items. First item was GB 4-39 to request the administration provide a report in reference to homeschooling, including number of participants at grade levels. Director Mahoney, who has been overseeing the homeschool plans since 2016, described the process and some of the regulations surrounding homeschooling. She informed the committee that parents must submit homeschooling plan, have it approved by the Worcester Public Schools, and provide a yearly update noting the student's progress. She explained that no grades are given to homeschool students. They do not receive a transcript credit or a diploma from any Worcester Public High School, and homeschool students are made aware of this beforehand. However, as city residents, they can enroll in public school at any time. Director Mahoney also noted that students who were previously homeschooled need to take, need not take an aptitude test in order to enroll in the Worcester Public Schools. Member Mailman made a motion to receive a report from the administration regarding the economic impact of homeschooling on the Worcester Public School budget. On motion, the vote, the motion passed four to nothing, four to zero by all. The second item we took was item 3-89.3 to consider a review of the Chapter 74 programs in the comprehensive high schools, including enrollment processes, criteria, and acceptance. The administration presented and informed the committee that students can apply for nine programs plus Worcester Technical High School for a total of 10, and presented data regarding the application, excuse me, the applicant pool, feeder schools, and pathway programs. The administration stated that the department, as a recruiting tool, is looking into making short videos of individual programs to give students a better understanding of what each program is all about. Member Mailman requested more consistent information and reports coming back to the school committee. The administration informed Member Mailman that she is able to get any data she requests in a relatively short amount of time. So, the motion was to receive a number of applicants, contrast with the number of students accepted to each program. On roll call, the motion was passed four to zero. The third item we took up was GB 3-262, provide a report on communication efforts and the community outreach via the new app and website for these higher, high achiever programs, and how we can engage further. The administration gave an update to the new app, Parent Square, and the new website, which has launched as of June 3. The administration informed the committee that the department has been phasing into Parent Square over the course of the school year, and the older platform for parent communication will be retired at the end of this school year. Parent Square has received a host of positive feedback. It's translatable and fully customizable depending on the audience. We made a motion to file on motion, and roll called, motion passed. We adjourned at 4:51 PM. That's the report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Some motions to approve, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. We have a couple grants on N. Consider the approval of a grant from the Next Generation Learning Challenges in the amount of $13,500. And also to consider approval of prior year payment in the Holyoke Tire in the amount of $7,113.60. If it goes collectively on a roll call, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Next up is General Business. We have 4.2 Superintendent Stilley Advisory Counsel, response to the administration. Anybody have comments on that? We can file that, or? Okay. Okay, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Response to the administration request a report, including 10 years of data on the amount of funding per school for credit buyback. That was done by Member Benanda.
It was interesting to see that we really just haven't increased the amount of money for buyback over 10 years. My question regarding that is, do we know how many students we have for buyback that did get to walk the stage, that had not achieved the 24 credits for this year?
Ma'am Superintendent, I'm sure you have that.
Do not have that data offhand. We're still graduating students as we speak.
Yes. Okay, could I have a report then back on that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can file this and get a report at the end of the graduations. Okay, collectively, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yeah.
Hang on.
Forget it. Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You all set?
Yep.
Okay, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. To request the administration provide an update report in reference to budgeting and finance for the Worcester Eastern Middle School, including projects and timelines on completion. And that was Member Biancaria brought that forth. Got a question?
As I said earlier this evening, for Worcester East Middle, when we're looking at when the progress is on the windows, we are up to June and August of 2025. I just want to express that we, we've been looking at this, we're gonna mark a 10-year mark when we hit August of 2025. So, I think we should have a rip and cutting when we finish the first phase, because at this time, we're still looking at, a lot of the windows in that area are boarded up, and they're not safe to open, and they're missing, they're missing entirely, there's no window there. So, I'm just hoping that we can look forward to Phase 1 of the windows and the redesign and so on, and the bid goes out. The only thing I will ask is that when we look at the bid for this, it says December 24, January 25, review and award the project bid. When that occurs, if we could, I ask that we receive a report in reference to that. So, my motion would be that we get information that we are moving forward in the end of January or the beginning of February, once the bid is approved. For a motion. Thank you.
Anybody else? Member?
I would just have a point of clarification, that's already in fog, so we should be getting updates on that.
Oh, you already have that? Oh, you already have that?
Yeah, so that will already be part of the updates we're getting in fog.
As long as we receive an updated report at the end of January, beginning of February, just so we know the timeline on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all set? Okay, so we'll just file that, roll call.
Yes, sir.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. To request an update on the grants that are being requested, some of any programs that may be impacted by the budget. Please list of applicable what programs. This was done by Member Johnson. You all set? Any questions? Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to adminis, I just actually, in regards to this backup that you provided, are these the grants that you, that there were programs cut or programs lost during this budget season in our schools that a grant is being able to replace that program so we don't miss out? Or are these just grants that we apply for this school year? My question.
Through the chair, it's, it's an actual combination. So, for example, the, where's the one? The... I'm looking. The 21st Century Learning Grant, so that would help support the after-school programming that we've lost. We're still waiting to hear from DESI if we get that, but that, that would help. And some of them are newer programs, so it is a combination of a few different things. We're constantly looking for, especially the after-school programming, grant opportunities because we, that's a big loss with ESER.
Okay, so... So, since we're doing, were there any, are there any programs out there that we had to cut this year due to budgeting reasons? Budgeting reasons that we could get a grant for to, to sustain next school years? Probably my question. And my guess is, is you guys have looked into that and whatever is out there that you have looked into and...
That's exactly it. So, we are, the, the after-school programming is the one that the ESER was... Well, let me back up a little bit. The, our, our base programming that we offer our students, the arts, the music, all of that, that continues with funding, all of that, or recommending the funding. So, what we are not able to fund this year, that was funded out of ESER, next school year, I'm sorry, is, are the after-school programs and the tutoring programs, those things. So, that's where we're looking for additional grants. What we have found so far is the 21st Century, we're not sure if we're gonna, we can't expand it yet, DESI won't allow us to because of some past practices. For some reason, they don't have the confidence in us, but we are doing that additionally so that we're not solely reliant on grant funding. We are having many conversations around advancement, both with WDF and how there can be a greater campaign that helps to support both the after-school programming and some athletic and enrichment programming for our youth. We're also talking with Hanover Insurance, local philanthropists, even our universities to see what that can look like. We have something that we're doing for this summer, for our, a part of our district, a greater program, summer program than, and UMass Chan is helping us with that. But we're, this is something that we're trying to get consistent and sustainable through MOUs and other agreements, and that's the advancement side of the work.
Thank you. All set?
Okay, so next we have the report, or sorry, the... So, make a motion. Motion to file, so roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Next, we have response from the administration to receive a report on how Worcester Public Schools' special education data compares with the rest of the state. Member Mailman? I don't know how many years you serve before you figure out. Now, do we stand again? We have to stand, okay. Thanks for all the data. I'm not sure that this answered the question that I had in mind, or what it tells us. So, what I've learned this year is that we really need to, in requesting data, we really need to indicate the, the information that we want back. So, I've been in the position where you can kill them with paper, too. So, thank you for killing me with paper, and I'll figure out what it was and file another item next year. Thank you. Okay, so motion to file, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Member Benanda?
I think when you look at the data, it is, when we go back to looking at the budget, remind us that our special ed students really need a lot of extra support and instruction. And with cutting of special ed teachers, this data isn't gonna look as great, the chances are. So, I'm thankful that committee member Mailman requested this because this definitely backs up the concern about the number of special education teachers being cut or the LD teachers being moved to be teachers of moderate special needs in classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. So, motion is to file, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Next up, we have response from the administration, receive feasibility report and updates on allowing remote classes via Zoom. Member Biancheria?
The item can be filed, thank you.
So the motion to file, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Next is the response from administration, provide report for family supports for students with attendance issues. Member Biancheria?
Thank you. As I look through this, there are a number of things that we do to support our students and our families when there are problems. And I did want to say that the daily caregiver notification of student absence via ConnectEd, I think is a great way of letting them know. Parent phone conference, TADI absent letters is also a way of communicating. This is all on the list here. And the safety of our staff conducting the home visits should be carefully considered. I certainly appreciate that also. And then Worcester Juvenile Court, Adult Failure to Cause, School Attendance is a criminal complaint filed against a parent aguardi in a six-month period and student must have seven absences or 14 half-day outs. And a 51A for same offense, it must be filed. I just had a quick question on that, and that is, is that all at the same school site? So the 51A is filed by the principal along with failure for attendance and so on? So does that fall under the safety category where we have someone else come in? Or does that fall under the principal responsibility? To administration?
Through the chair, it's a case-by-case decision. The 51A would be filed at the school level, and it is not the case that every single student who has excessive absences would have these drastic measures being taken.
So the case-by-case is looked at by whom?
By the school personnel.
School personnel makes that determination?
They do.
So if they fill out a 51A, is that before they would make that determination or after they'd make that determination that they would have to go to juvenile court?
There would be a variety of contacts with the family, meaning lots of interactions between the school and the family before 51A be filed.
So that is done prior to juvenile court being informed?
Yes, Adult Failure to Cause triggers the 51A and the family would meet at juvenile court to discuss the case.
Okay, thank you.
You good?
That item can be filed? Yes, sir.
Okay, so motion is to file, roll call.
Member Alvarez? Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, so we have, next up is 4-7, 4-44. Provide report list of incidents that precede the suspension of students as noted in 4-7. And request administration provide a communication, phone call when altercations occur in the schools, providing a location of the school sites and summary of altercations. After discussion, this time was amended to request a list of incidents occurring at the school sites. And this is motion is to file. We all set? Mr. Biancheria?
Sorry. Thank you for the information.
I, um, hang on, who else to read the next one to that, 4-7? There's two 4-7s here, so I'm a little confused.
There's two.
Okay. Providing other school suspension risk ratio report for the past seven years, similar to the one provided in, I guess, 4-7.
What I'm looking at is, there is not a big difference between '22, '23 and '23 and '24. So my concern is, when we talked about the budget this evening, we were not looking at Woodard Day having the number of available seats for our students. So my concern is, where are our students going to go if this occurs? Do we have another site we're going to be moving them to?
I thought we answered that, didn't we answer that in budget?
Because during the budget, it was, I think, 80 seats climbed out to 50 seats and so on.
Yeah, we gave a reason, but go ahead.
Through the chair, as shared during budget, last school year, this school year, we have not utilized our seats that we were paying for at Woodard Day. We used two-thirds of them, and our goal is to continue to put things in place preventively so that students are staying in our schools and they're not making choices that even make them eligible to be expelled or as we refer to as long-term suspension. So the data shows that we don't need it. Students are showing, we've got other means of correction going on, and we have other ways to handle it. And there have been times, actually, many parents don't want their children to go to Woodard, and that is their choice. So then we end up losing our children to the streets, and that's not okay either. So we have other options for them.
Because we're in the reference to the suspension and so on, what are the other options if we're not going to house them in a school that is under Worcester Public Schools? What are we offering to our students for an alternative? Because we do have victims that have to stay in the same site. And that doesn't always work when we're looking at what happens with our students.
So if a child has been put up for long-term suspension, then, and the parent appeals or we find an alternative, that might include placement at a different alternative setting. It might include placement, it might include putting in interventions at the school sites such as safety plans. They're case-by-case situations based off of what the actual incident is, and so that's what we use. I'm not sure, Miss Member Biancheria, if you're aware, but when students were being sent to Woodard, they weren't all arriving, and then we don't know where they were going. And that's not okay. So it's our responsibility, even when they make poor decisions, to ensure that we are providing a free and appropriate education. We do have tutoring available to them. Cannot say that that is in their best interest, they need to be around others, but that is another option that families can take. But we have things in place now so that we have less children that we are even referring to Woodard. Those things, as has been shared, our Dean of Students, our Climate and Culture Assistance, our Climate and Culture Teams at our schools, our Wellness Centers at our secondary schools. We have a lot of things in place that are detouring the way that children used to behave in Worcester. I really do invite you to come to some schools with me and you can see what's going on.
I certainly will take up on the information, but I will tell you that I've been to schools and I do have concerns because there are victims in this situation. And unfortunately, when the victim is at the same school that the person who assaulted them is still present, that doesn't always work out. And the victims are the people that also need to be respected and looked at and assured that they are going to be held to the highest standard as far as that's concerned. And I do realize that we have other pieces of all of this puzzle, but those are questions that I will continue to look into. But I have been to other sites under Worcester Public Schools and when we look at our students and what we are doing, the priority, of course, is the educational piece, but it's also to ensure that everyone is comfortable, including the person who was assaulted.
We can't, we can't ever use the word assaulted in the students assault, students, so.
If we don't use the word assaulted, then what do we use?
Ma'am?
It's a physical assault that I'm concerned with in the other incidents, but if you don't want that word used, certainly we can discuss how we phrase it.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm open to that. Thank you.
Okay, we're on... Remember, what's your one?
I believe it's a combined.
Go buy one, okay, go ahead.
So just to straighten out about Woodward Day. There were many a student that went there and they didn't want to come back to their comprehensive high schools because they felt they got the individual attention there and the parents would come and ask would they please stay. There were, the last year in '22, where they did not do a great, as great a job as they had done before with tracking students. So we had to change our policy on that in our procedures, so that did not happen. The report that we got here that lists the incidents, the incidents, how you report them to the state, you know, are along of fighting and physical assault. That's what, that's when a student, there's a fight and students fight, either they hit another student or they hit a, basically it's another student, well, it could be a staff member too. That is called fighting and physical assault. So in the list that was given here, it looks like there were 382. I see the big 37%, so am I guessing, am I reading this right? That there were 382 fighting and physical assaults on a student, which represented 37% of the disciplines? Am I reading that right? On that chart?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay, so my other question is, I know there, you know, there was nothing here about weapons. So was there no weapons during the whole school year that were confiscated in schools?
Through the chair, these are the top five, there was not significant amount of weapons confiscated.
So would you, in a report, be able to list the number of weapons that were? I think the request was for all incidents that occurred. And so that was not fulfilled with this report. So I'd like to hold this part of it and get that other part that's missing.
Through the chair, the challenge that we're finding, and you know, you were principal in this district for many, many years. The way that our principals code is not the same. So different principals code differently for different things. And so when you pull the data, it really does not give an accurate picture of what's been going on at the schools and would be irresponsible to provide that without context. So if you want to make a request that gives more context and we can show a true picture of things, but again, the way principals code right now is varying and it does not show what is going on in our schools. We are planning on working with our principals to create some kind of crosswalks so we have more consistency on how coding gets placed. But for example, even under fight and physical assault, what that looks like at an elementary school and what that looks like at a middle and high school is very different, but it gets coded exactly the same. So the data, as you just read it without context and without being in schools on a regular, can paint a very different picture. So what exactly are you looking for, Member Benenda?
I think what I was looking for was to match this with the discipline. So in other words, like how is it working? So if you're, say, a physical assault with a student, how many, what was the decision on those kids? How many stayed at the school and how many maybe went to the alternative school? I was looking to match, kind of match that, so you would see the violations and then what happened, and then we'd have a better idea of knowing how effective the interventions are.
Through the chair, if we could make a one-to-one correlation like that, that would be very simple. But as you know, if a child fights one time and it's a very severe fight and someone gets very hurt, that discipline is going to look very different than a child who gets in a scruffle in the hallway. Still might get coded as a fight, but the behavior is very different. There's children that fight many times, but they're very quick and they end. And there's other children who they never have a fight and they get in one big fight, and that becomes a much more severe discipline. So again, you are a high school principal, you know what this looks like. To make a one-to-one correlation, I'm really having trouble figuring out how to provide you that data and not have it be reams of data, which we can provide. I just don't know if you're going to have enough context for that kind of correlation that you're looking for.
So we all, as superintendents, we know we have to provide the state a record, right? Right, when you do your SIMS report, there's a record that talks about this area that you have to report. Just run off that would be fine for me. You don't have to do anything more complicated. Who's ever doing the daily input? Because the state gets access to our data on a daily, right, daily basis. On discipline, that'll be fine.
Then we'll provide to you what we provide to Desi. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's, yeah, I think it's on the website, isn't it? Okay, we can file this item and ask for a report, it's on the Desi website, we got the information. Take that collectively, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
I'm sorry, was there a motion to call?
We're in the middle of a roll, we're in the middle of the roll call. So the motion is to file and also ask for a report on what's reported at Desi, what's on the website.
That's fine, thank you.
Yes.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Member Benenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, next up is Member Mailman. Response to administration via another school suspension risk ratio report for the last seven years. We just, okay, so that one we can, we just filed, okay. 4-43A, request to administration provide a number of employees on paid administrative leave this school year as well as the title and dollar amount. We can file that.
Can be filed, sir.
What's that?
That item can be filed, thank you.
To do the report? Okay, I want to thank you for the report. And it was a lot of time and effort, money went into that, so we will file that. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, provide a list of sport teams in Worcester Public Schools, corresponding schools. Member Biancheria?
Thank you for the list, I certainly appreciate it. I know that I'll be reviewing it along with the budget for the sports. Thank you. Can be filed.
Okay, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, provide demographic data by high school, by grade, and early college participation, including English language learners, special education students, low-income students. Additionally, provide QCC, list of state enrollment information, who and how many hours of education are provided for each college on the campus versus at high school as well as completion data. Member Mailman?
Thank you for the report for the last three semesters, I think I'm looking at. A couple of questions, I mean, the data, I guess, what would our goals be in terms of making, you know, it's males, it's Latinos, it's English learners, and it's special ed? It's the same categories that come up with every program that we offer and every specialty program? And is there anything that the district is thinking about to better represent? And there's also differences between schools that were kind of notable as well. But didn't know if the administration has a plan to look at equity amongst the early college program? And then I just wanted to note that we're at 700 students. It seems like about maybe for fall and spring of '23 and '24. And what is the, I imagine there's not additional funding this year for early college from the state, so would we expect to work with the same number of students in the coming year? Thank you.
Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair, so we, we actually are, we have a meeting scheduled, I want to say maybe even next week, to start talking about what early college will look like, moving, you know, three years out again and setting some benchmarks in terms of the enrollment, what we are looking to do using this, you know, our current data, but where do we want to see our early college going? Holistically, and then what does that mean for Worcester State versus QCC? We've got a new meeting now set up with Anna Maria. So it's still part of this work in progress, but the state does look to Worcester as the lead in early college. And so they are really going to spend time with us, helping to further, I guess, craft that for us.
Oh, sorry, some of the challenges in terms of meeting the equity requirements that we're trying to accomplish in our vocational programs and everywhere else? Any thoughts about that?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, in terms of like how early college can, can funnel into that, if you will, and, and have, is, is that your question?
Well, how do we increase the number of males, the number of Latino males, black males, the numbers that don't, across all the other programs that we have, same kind of thing?
Same idea. Yes, so, I've been in conversation with Dr. Morris. She is working with Mr. Christonas and our entire college and career team because there's multiple pathways, if you will, for youth, early college, dual enrollment, our vocational and our AP program, all those different things as you move into the secondary setting. So, how do we, how do we track the data in all the different categories for all the different programs? I think that's what you're getting at, and we are.
And look for similar results, I guess.
Exactly, exactly, that parity across programs and across various groups of children. Thank you, yes.
What's that? Uh, Member Benanda?
I actually want to say that, I thought that data looked great. Each school is so different in what they, the number of kids they have and the number of programs that they offer in each school. Vocational school has so many richness of programs, so the kids might not want to take those type of programs. But what is a great thing, and, and I hope everyone that's watching tonight knows, is that the college, early college, you can get your own classroom teachers to be cert, you know, to teach the class, the college class, so your English one oh one and one oh two and your math can be taught by your own teachers in your school for that college credit. And I think this, this is a model that other districts haven't tried yet, but it is a very successful model here, and it continues to grow. And that's why you see those large numbers. Particularly at Worcester Tech, they must have English and math teachers within their school, actually teaching that English one oh one, right, and, and math one oh one. So, this is a, I think this is a very, this is a show of a very successful work that's going on in the Worcester Public Schools, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
That's part of, Member Benanda, through the chair, Member Benanda. The, the continuous improvement in this area around specifically early college because as we're learning, as students are transferring to universities, some of the universities are not taking the school, the, the classes that they have been taught outside of a uni, outside of a university, yes. So, that's part of our, our improvement efforts, but that's some new learning that has happened in the last school year.
Okay, so motion is to file, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, to provide funding program report for summer credit recovery programs. What's that? File?
File.
All those in favor, I mean, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, to provide current data on how many scholars with disabilities are placed in non-sub, separate classrooms in these districts, and how many inclusive teachers are assigned work in each district. Member Alvarez?
Yeah, thank you for providing that information. However, I'm just wondering, is there a reason why other high schools and other schools in general were not mentioned in this report?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, we, we grouped it by quadrant, so the, all of the schools that are in the north quadrant are part of that. And then, all of the, so, we list the high school, but then the schools that are included.
Gotcha, I see, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we can file that, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Yes. Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Okay. Here we're on, to provide a report on the system, does special education currently have employees to monitor compensatory services? Member Alvarez?
Am I allowed to ask questions even after?
Yeah, you can ask, you can ask them now.
So, for now, we can just?
File it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, motion is to file, I'm sorry.
Is that, what, what, I, I'm sorry, what item is that?
That was, uh, item.
GB five three.
Response to the miss, is probably pointing special education. Four dash five three, to provide a report on the system, does special education currently have employees to monitor compensatory services?
I have a question.
Um, Member Johnson?
Thank you, through the chair, to administration, I, I think some of us probably already received the email in regards to this matter, so I do have a question here in regards to this, to, through the chair, to administration, in regards to how, how, what is the frequency and the duration of missed instruction related to minutes tracked day to day in the schools? Administration.
Dr. Morris?
Through the chair, if a special educator is out for any reason, the special education supervisors track the lost time, and they use a Google Sheet. And so, there's a team that meets regarding the provision of compensatory services. They're ongoing now, we do provide compensatory services throughout the school year, also through the, throughout the summer. But the process is driven by the school, up to the sped supervisors, and it's housed in a Google Sheet.
And who has access to that information? Can, can anyone go in and kind of see who's tracking that and who, who's plugging that in?
The special education administration team has access to that data, so they help design the compensatory service plan.
Okay, so if a teacher was out or the para educator was out and a student missed some of their minutes or whatever, how would they know that, and how would the administrator know that to put it into the tracking?
Through the chair, the administrator doesn't put it through, it would be the special education supervisor for the quadrant. So, each quadrant has a special education supervisor that oversees all of the schools. So, it could be speech, it could be other services that were missed, and then the group would meet, and they'd meet, convene with the family, and they determine the compensatory service plan.
Okay, so, and I know we all, kind, well, some of us got this email. I just want to just ensure that whatever the tracking mechanism is in of missed minutes of services that need to be provided to our children or special ed, that ensure that it's there, it's being tracked, and it's, so our students are provided the services that they need, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
We can file that, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next is request administration via the school committee, all MOU signed by the superintendent and President Chief of Police. Um, Member Biancheria?
Thank you. Thank you for this information for the MOU. However, do we have a timeline on when we would be coming up with a new MOU due to the fact that the mission is to facilitate relationship building by the SLO, such with students, facilities, faculty, excuse me, faculty, staff, and community members, and it's fostering the safe and healthy development of all students in the Worcester Public Schools? So, my question is, we're no longer going to have that. So, that's the goals and objectives on this MOU. Do we have a timeframe on when we'll be having a present conversation with our police chief to then update this so it reads what is correctly happening?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, as previously shared, this is the current MOU. We have SLOs through the end of this school year. The acting Chief of Police reached out to me, said he wasn't sure if he was going to be able to staff the SLOs for next school year. I told him if that's the case, we would have to revisit our MOU during the summer. He and I both have agreed that we will do that, we will have a refined MOU for the start of the school year, but everything remains as is for the school year.
Then I would make a motion?
Excuse me, then I would ask that we have a motion filed to then provide us with the appropriate MOU in September, the end of September, and we can then have the appropriate information in hard copy for us from the Worcester Police Department and signed by yourself and the Chief of Police.
Okay, so take that off the file, roll call.
This, this item would be filed with that motion.
Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, consider approved the Worcester Public Schools twenty-five budget? You can hold that?
Hold.
Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Holding.
Yes, to hold.
Member Biancheria?
It's to hold, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, I consider the basketball court at Chandler Elementary in memory of Antonio Rossi. I don't know if anybody's got to see the work that was done over there, but it was a pretty, pretty good job. And he's willing to do Anthony Rossi, which is his son, is willing to do more work at the Worcester Public Schools, and also for our house population here in the city of Worcester. He's very dedicated to the Worcester, and he's a good, good, good man, so. Anyway, so send that FOG, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Member McCullough? Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, so motion to adjourn, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Member McCullough? Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?